Good evening, and welcome to the January 22nd, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the agenda for Monday, January 22nd, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting.
Be approved as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
President Garlock?
We have three public hearings for the Cedar Rapids Community School District tonight. Our first public hearing will cover the Washington High School restroom project. Board Secretary Reestrom, have we received any written correspondence related to the Washington High School restroom project hearing?
We have not.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing? The public hearing for the Washington High School restroom project is now officially closed. The second hearing we have will address the Viola Gibson Elementary School Garage Project. Board Secretary Reestrom, have we received any written correspondence related to the Viola Gibson Elementary School Garage Project?
We have not.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
We do not.
The public hearing for the Viola Gibson Elementary School Garage Project is now officially closed. The third one we will address is the Washington High School Roof Replacement. Board Secretary Reestrom, have we received any written correspondence related to the Washington High School Roof Replacement?
We have not.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
We have not.
The public hearing for the Washington High School Roof Replacement is now officially closed. The public hearings are now officially closed. We will now hear from those who have requested to address the board. Ryan, do we have any members of the public who have requested to address the board?
We do. We have one.
Okay, thank you. With one speaker this evening, you'll be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reestrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There is a process outlined in board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and personal information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. Ryan, please call our speaker.
Dan Franklin, and he'll be talking about teachers committing crimes and backwards books. You may.
So I can't mention names, is that correct?
You may not.
Pardon me?
No, you may not.
How come?
That's a personnel issue.
I got a constitutional right to free speech, don't I? Not in here, I don't? Are you winding the time now?
Your time has started, yes.
Oh my gosh. Well, it's five minutes, correct?
Yep.
Is it, do I see it?
Hit start.
Okay, fine. There's three teachers I'd like to talk about, I guess I can't, that have committed crimes, giving kids backwards books, Ulysses mythology, photocopying and then putting the staple on the right-hand side, which makes the kids read right to left. I had one many, many years ago at Cedar Rapids, Washington. My son had one. I sure would like to mention some names, because that's what it's all about. Football coaches assaulted me during this time. I got three grades changed. They were only obligated to change one. Ralph Plagman was who I was work— Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see how these teachers can commit crimes and get away with it. The strength coach, not mentioning the name, at Cedar Rapids, Wash—when I was there, I was in the parking lot and he goes, "Are you Dan Franklin?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Will you talk to me in the principal's office?" I said, "No problem. I have the backwards book with me and progress reports." They get—as I went to the principal's office, he called the police immediately and said I was trespassing. So I immediately turned and walked out the door. As I'm walking, he kicks my feet four times to make me do something. I believe there's video of it. He is currently a coach now. He coached my nephew and was very rude to him. I didn't tell my nephew anything about what happened. And my nephew's changing schools now because he was born on the wrong side of the river. I sure would like to mention the name. I'm sorry, I don't speak in public very often, but I have the backwards book and progress reports. He gave him a D at the end of the semester because I said, "We're trying to put him in the middle language class." They changed that grade to a C, it should have been a B, and they changed two other grades. It didn't have anything to do with it, they just wanted to appease me. This is wrong, this is continually happening, it happens decades between decades. I was told it didn't happen. That's not correct. I have three names which I'd like to mention, but I can't, that are afraid to talk at the school board meeting. I'm not afraid. I spent 15 years in Las Vegas driving limos, town cars and cabs. I was there during the pandemic. When they closed down the strip, there's a million people out of work. I know what's going on. Adrenal chrome is real, and that's a fact. Luciferian pedophiles is real, and that's a fact. And we don't want to address it here in Cedar Rapids, and I feel like it should be addressed. And I feel like teachers that commit crimes should be held accountable for what they commit. One teacher's no longer with the Cedar Rapids School System at Washington, football coach, quarterback. He was making $100,000 a year. And when I took the backwards book to him, he said, "That's a teaching tool." So I kept every progress report like most people wouldn't. Homework was taken out, seven different incidents, homework was taken out, test scores were taken, quizzes were changed. I have the evidence right here, I've kept it for a long time. I wasn't gonna just not do anything, but when my nephew went to first year of high school and he was treated differently on the football team when he is a stud. My sister was second-team All-State at Cedar Rapids, Washington many years ago. My niece, my namesake, was first-team All-State at Cedar Rapids, Washington. My brother took fourth in state in wrestling, and my older brother was first in state in swimming. We come from a very athletic family, and this person shouldn't even have been talking to my nephew. My nephew was 14-years-old on the freshman team, and he belittled him. The freshman coaches said he was a practice player of the week, and he went to my son and says, "No, you're not. This is not the type of person that you give large amounts of money to. These are predators." And that's a fact. 30 seconds left? Unbelievable, it's going on, and it continues to go on. Anybody wants to see my backwards book or the copies I kept, progress reports, may see them. There's so much more to say, but I'm not a speaker. And what's going on in this America is unbelievable. I talked to a lot of people from different countries picking them up at the international airport, and they laugh at Americans. They laugh at Americans who won't believe.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I'll now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Grover for her report.
Thank you, President Garlock. I would like to begin my superintendent's report tonight by celebrating and congratulating the recent winter graduates of Metro High School. This past Thursday, 20 students received their high school diplomas. It was an honor to be in the audience, to hear their accomplishments, and to see the excitement from their families, their friends, as well as their teachers. They always have such amazing stories, and I would like to extend the best to all of the graduates in their next chapter in life. Other exciting competitions happening at our local schools where our students competed. This past weekend, the Future City Competition was hosted at Maple Grove Elementary. We were elated to be selected as the host site. A huge thank you to Principal Duffy, as well as Vice President Tominski, for leading us to this opportunity. On a sheet of plywood, our middle school students, they had to design a city for the future that fits the theme of "Electrify Your Future." Part of the process was for them to design and create a model out of recycled materials, given a presentation, and preparing a budget. A special congratulations to the team. Is this Chanel Stat? I hope that's correct, from Taft Middle School for taking home second in the state at this regional competition. And I want to say, maybe this is the first time that this was hosted here?
First time in Cedar Rapids.
First time in Cedar Rapids and competed tremendously well. You want to add anything to that? No, it's just the Future City, I think, is a great opportunity for our middle school kids, and I just wanted to, you know, especially thank Principal Duffy for making the school available. I think it was a great site. There's a lot of need. I think there's about 40 teams from across the state that came to Cedar Rapids to compete. Those teams are usually about that size, so quite a few kiddos, quite a few families that are coming. So a school like Maple Grove, I think, provided a perfect venue for it.
Wonderful. As we think about our facilities, I do want to provide an update, as we know Maple Grove is one of our newer facilities. In December, we discussed our request for proposals to help us with studying a bond referendum for 2025. Our committee is comprised of 20 people from our community, as well as our district. This past week, they interviewed five firms on last Thursday. It was an all-day process, so first of all, thank you to everyone who participated. That was a huge commitment, and we're talking about, you know, people that have huge jobs and responsibilities, they dedicated an entire day here to our Cedar Rapids Community School District for this process. We will share all of this information because we want to be transparent as we move forward and demonstrate our commitment to listening to our constituents. The chosen firm will guide us in our renewal of our PEPAL funds for September 2024 and the passing of the General Obligation Bond Referendum in November of 2025. This will be a two-year journey of engaging and mobilizing our community in our efforts to create the best possible facilities for our students and our community. The interview group will be here at our next meeting, and they will bring forward their recommendation to the Board of Education. An update on the Hardin Dome is now open. The cafeteria dome is open. The gym domes at Hardin and Taft should be finished by the end of February. We continue to celebrate these milestones. As a matter of fact, I think it opened today, the one at Hardin. Students at Hardin Middle School now have access to the school's cafeteria, the auditorium, and the fine arts classrooms. The beam repairs have been completed, and the students are once again enjoying the space. I want to thank our food and nutrition staff for all of their adjustments, but they were back in their school's kitchen serving breakfast and lunch. Thank you to the entire school staff for their patience while these repairs were completed for the safety of our students. Weather permitting, crews expect to finish the structural repairs on the school's gym domes again by the end of February. Just a couple of weather shout-outs. Somebody was saying, "I don't know what the weather's gonna be tonight," so I paused. Continuing with the shout-outs, we have been dealing with a lot of weather, snow, snow, and more snow. I would like to publicly thank and give a huge shout-out to our maintenance crews, who have been working tirelessly to continue to clear our school's parking lots and our playground spaces, to our custodians and engineers for keeping the sidewalks clean. It's been tough, but truly, we appreciate their efforts to try to keep things going for our students and staff. The students found their ways for a little fun, and so when school has been in session, students across Cedar Rapids Community School District, they got to enjoy the fluffy white stuff, bundling up and getting outside, taking part in a little sledding and snowshoeing. So you can see more winter activities, maybe on our Facebook page. They didn't invite me out, though, probably for the best. Just a little bit of update on Trailside, even with the weather, they are moving ahead. Things are looking great at our newest elementary school. As you can see, the construction team, they have been there. It's exciting to see this new progress. And just as a reminder, let me kind of see what's happening there. Exciting, exciting. And so while we have the excitement of the new facility going up, we want to remind the board that we do have two campuses, that's Arthur and Garfield, that will be combining. And so we want to make sure that we're able to provide timely information to our staff members. And so over the next week, we will work with Trailside staff and communicate the staffing process. This is being led by Mr. Ballard from our Human Resources and Carla Hogan from our business office. They'll be leading the efforts to let them know about their placements and the timeline going forward for staffing. Instructional empowerment, you heard a lot about instructional empowerment at the last board meeting. Thank you for your engagement. Just a quick update, last week, we had instructional empowerment back in our district, and we worked with over 100 leaders for two days. These days, they were specifically designed so that the teachers, the instructional coaches, could learn about team-centered classrooms, they got a chance to get all the new materials. I did get a chance to go by the room where all the work had happened and all the—I was reading the walls, the posters, and all of that, so I could tell that they were digging in, preparing themselves to be able to lead this work within our district. Just another reminder here, Meet the Magnets, and a part of our magnet options within our school district, it is an opportunity for us to provide school choice from within. If you're looking for a choice, choose from within Cedar Rapids Community School District. We currently offer six magnet schools. We would invite you to learn more about each of these magnet schools during a very special event called Meet the Magnets. This is going to be on Tuesday, January 30th. I hope to be there as well, so please come out and join us from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. As a reminder, online applications for the lottery will be accepted through Monday, March the 4th. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Do we have other board reports?
Just want to remind the board that ISP Day on the Hill is happening on February 13th. On February 12th, there is a learning opportunity that will help us learn how to speak with legislatures—legislators, while providing an update on current education bills that we will then discuss on the 13th. The following week is the Coalition of State School Board Association, the COSPA Conference, the national conference this year, is in Dallas. If you have any questions or want to register, please contact Board Secretary Reestrom.
Thank you, Director Borchardine. Director Roundtree, do you have a board report?
Yes, so last week, we were fortunate enough to come together as a Public Relations and Communications Corps Operational Committee. Is that a long name? At present, we have only the Chief of Staff and board members, but we are eagerly awaiting the opportunity to welcome the communications team and others during our inaugural meeting. We focused on the interview timeline for the Strategic Communication and Marketing Director. The interviews were conducted last Friday. We also initiated discussions on the internal and external communications structure with compliance, safety, and communications. Furthermore, we talked about what a strategic plan could potentially look like for communications. Our objective is to establish trust and credibility throughout—through transparent and inclusive communication. Therefore, we believe that these three aspects are critical for our strategic plan, and that concludes my board report this evening.
Thank you, Director Roundtree. Any other board reports? Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Aye.
Moving on to administration, the annual comprehensive financial report was submitted for approval to the Audit Committee at their meeting on January 16th, 2024. Kevin Smith, partner at RSM US LLP, the district's independent accounting firm that performed the fiscal year 2022-2023 financial audit, will provide a brief presentation of the audit findings. Mr. Smith, the floor is all yours.
Here to present the results from the fiscal year 2023 audit. The drafts that you have in your material, or the copies you have in your material are drafts. We don't anticipate any significant changes to anything in those—in the report. We're just finalizing a few things and hope to be issuing the audit later this week. So we were engaged to perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. The first—the main purpose of our audit is to express, issue, and opinion over the financial statements, and whether they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The opinion that we will be issuing will be an unmodified opinion, so that is a clean opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive as a part of an external audit. There weren't any changes in the scope of our audit, no difficulties in performing. The audit had full cooperation and access to all the information we needed to in order to perform the audit. In the financial statements, there was only one new GASB standard that was effective for the district this year. It did not have a significant impact, so the district did choose to pass on recording this GASB 96, which was some subscription-based IT arrangements, so similar to leases, certain contracts that are being shown on your books as they relate to IT. They chose to pass on it, it was only about $1.5 million, so not material to the financial statements. So no new standards that did have an impact on the statements this year. One of the things that we point out to you are significant estimates that are included within the financial statements. We do look at these because they do have some subjectivity involved that management does make to these estimates, and we did conclude that all of them were reasonable. So for example, we look at the pension assumptions that IPRZ uses for the liability that gets recorded by the district, and the other post-employment benefit liability as well. Those are two areas that we get actuaries involved to make sure that those assumptions look reasonable. In the letter that you see from RSM, this is just a summary of what you see within the draft of that letter. Again, no new changes to accounting policies during the year. There were no audit adjustments that we had to make as a part of the audit. You'll see one unrecorded misstatement, and that was for about $1.5 million, and that was related to some of those subscription-based IT arrangements and prepaid expenditures. The district chose not to make those adjustments because they don't anticipate those having an impact moving forward, so you do see that recorded as an unrecorded misstatement. There were, as I mentioned, there were no disagreements with management or difficulties performing the audit. In accordance with government auditing standards, we also do issue a report on internal controls over financial reporting. So we don't issue an opinion over controls, but we do report back to you any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. There were no material weaknesses that were included in the compliance report. You'll see one significant deficiency noted, and it does just relate to not recording some of those prepaid expenditures. Because it was a significant enough dollar amount to bring to your attention, we did report that as a significant deficiency. So you do see that in the compliance report, but again, it was management's—it was something that was identified during the audit, and management chose not to correct it, but again, not a material impact to the financials. The—and no instances of noncompliance as it relates to state compliance. There's a state compliance section of that report as well. The only item you see in there that you see every year is some minor adjustments made to the certified enrollment that gets reported to the state in October of 2022. I think there was only like an eight-student adjustment or something like that, so very minimal adjustment, but you do see that reported. We do also audit—perform a single audit, which is the audit over the federal grant programs. This year, the two programs that were tested were the ESAR grant, grant funds, and then the child nutrition program. And for both of those programs, we did not have any findings to report, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no instances of noncompliance. So those two programs did make up a good portion of the federal grant expenditures for the district for the fiscal year, about 75% of federal dollars. So that was all I was going to report to you, but happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Questions from the board? Thank you for your work in auditing our financials, and thank you, Carla, for doing all of the prep work that goes into that. We know that it's huge, so we appreciate your time and all your effort. Do we have a motion to approve the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2023?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
President Garlock?
We will have a moment of silence for the passing of a Cedar Rapids Community School District staff member. Jessica Luna, interim principal of Jefferson High School, will provide us with a few words. Ms. Luna, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I wrote some words down, so I'm gonna read, just that it helps with my nerves, so that's why I'm reading and not looking up if I don't look up enough. But I'm here to do my best in representing Jefferson High School and expressing the loss we have felt. Dr. Jim Dostal was not a fan of public praise or attention, so out of respect for him, I will try to be brief. Dr. Dostal left a lasting impression on everyone he met. He was an influential coach, teacher, and friend. His closest friends would tell you that Dr. Dostal was the teacher's name students were most intimidated to see on their schedules, but the one who always ended up with the most graduation party invites, requests for letters of recommendation, and the teacher students overwhelmingly voted most influential year after year. For those who knew him well, he was straightforward, passionate, and always well-dressed because, in his words, "The students deserved to know they were worth dressing up for." He dedicated his life's work to supporting and growing the community he loved most, and we will forever be changed and grateful for it. I wanted to also take a moment to remind all within our community that you are never truly alone. Life is hard, unpredictable, and at times overwhelming. This is the inevitable truth of life. What is also true is that our community is full of resources and genuine people who love and support you in every phase of your life. Rely on your people, lean into one another, and never lose sight of the fact that you are seen, you are heard, and you are absolutely valued. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Dr. Dostal, let us also consider the lives of the students and staff that he positively impacted as an educator in our school district. our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna, for those words. Is there a motion to adjourn the work, the regular board meeting and the work session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are officially adjourned at 6:00 PM.